Good morning, everyone. It is Monday, July 15th, 2024, 10:00 a.m., and I welcome everyone to the City Council Work Session this morning. And we're doing introduction of new employees first, right? Go ahead.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, City Council. It is my absolute pleasure to help introduce our newest employees to the city, and we're going to start with Chief Hall.
Thanks, Terry. So hiring's definitely looking up. We've hired nine since April of this year, and we have two of our very fine police officers here with us today. So first of all, I'd like to introduce Jason Robillard. Both of the police officers that we're introducing today are actually post-certified and come with prior experience. So Jason, if you want to say a little bit about yourself?
Hello? Thank you for inviting us here today. Jason Robillard, just started a few weeks ago. I came from the Sheriff's Office originally, been in law enforcement for about two years, did animal control before that. Prior to law enforcement, I was a high school teacher, taught psychology and history, originally from Michigan, and I'm excited to be here.
Thank you, welcome.
Our next police officer is Tristan Hotelling. So Tristan also comes to us from the Montrose County Sheriff's Office, and if you want to say a little bit about yourself.
Thanks, sir. Morning, everyone. Good to see you. I'm Tristan Hotelling. Before this, I was prior military. I was an Apache helicopter mechanic. I'm a Colorado native from the east side, from Indian Hills, Colorado. A lot of people don't know where that's at, but in between Morrison and Conifer, so good times. Came from the Sheriff's Office, about two years of experience over there as a patrol deputy, and then now I'm here. Hobbies, I love outdoor stuff and lifting heavyweights, so that's a little bit about me. Good to see y'all.
Welcome.
Now, Public Works?
Good morning, Council. We've got a couple of employees introduced this morning as well. They've both been with us a little while, so we've been testing them out, and they're doing very well. So I'll start with Ryan Powers. He's in our Parks Division, started as a seasonal with us and then moved to full-time. And then Dustin Wilk is in our Streets Division, and I'll let them both tell you more about themselves.
Good morning, everyone. Ryan Powers, like he said, I was a seasonal Parks employee, now full-time employee, originally from Southern California. Love being here, love being outdoors, run a lot, so basically.
Hi, y'all. I'm Dustin Wilk. I started about a month ago with the streets. I'm originally from southeast Colorado, lived up in Rifle for 10 years, and moved down here because I'm getting engaged, so that's what brought me down here.
Welcome to both of you.
Excited to introduce Justin. He's our newest GIS analyst. Super excited to have him on board. He comes with a lot of experience, local guy. The experience came in handy. Our GIS product usually runs pretty smoothly, but when things go sideways, it's pretty spectacular. So he happened to join right at the right time. Zach told me that he walked in the door and he says, hey, welcome aboard, grab a bucket. So he was able to help us untangle that mess pretty quickly, so we're happy to have him aboard, let him tell you about himself.
Good morning. My name is Justin Bollinger. I'm from Montrose. Been here for a long time. Went to CSU, go Rams. Moved back almost immediately after college, and I just did three and a half years with GIS in Delta County, so I've got a little experience. Nothing quite like starting off with a server failure, so that was fun.
Welcome.
Any questions?
Any questions, Council?
Thank you.
Welcome aboard to all of you, and good luck. Okay, moving on to item two under discussion items. Discussion, excuse me. I'll tell you, guys, just so nobody's afraid, I do not have COVID. I've tested negative. I am not contagious, but I sound like hell. So item 2A is Cedar Creek Cemetery Bridge Replacement Contract Award and City Engineer Scott Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A lot of people don't know, we have a bridge in Cedar Creek Cemetery, but there's the main portion of the cemetery, which is where most of the grave sites are, but we also own the north side of the cemetery, north of Cedar Creek, kind of bisects the northern half there. Up there is, it's called Potter's Yard, I don't know exactly the details of it, but it's a portion of the cemetery, Lisa probably knows, and some of our maintenance facilities. So when they do, you know, when they do an excavation or things of that sort, a lot of times they'll shove a little material on the other side of the creek so it's out of view for services. The bridge that goes there, it's a large, it's, some would call it a culvert, some would call it a bridge, but it's a large nine-and-a-half-foot diameter crossing, pretty large flows that come down Cedar Creek, so it's sized appropriately. It's a metal CMP culvert. It failed, don't know exactly, probably 15, 20 years ago, they kind of patched it together. You can see where they've done some initial repairs, and then it finally failed for good. This go around, the bottom of it is corroded out, and it's kind of folded in on itself. So it's essentially fully failed. Initially, we were planning to do a full replacement, turn it into a bridge. Got a little deeper into the design, and the head wall, which we're guessing was from that, some of those intermediate repairs, was in good shape. It's also a really low-service bridge. The only people that use it are whatever crosses for maintenance a couple of times a week, and a lot of pedestrians use it, kind of their walking to connect some, from some of the neighborhoods nearby. And so it's not a really heavy-duty, high-service bridge. We got looking deeper into it, and we're pretty confident that we'll be able to save those head walls and replace just the culvert itself. So we'd remove the existing culvert from between those head wall structures on each end, snake in a new pipe, which is, we're going with a special-coated CMP. To get in that size, you need, to go with the CMP, which we generally try not to, which is a corrugated metal pipe, but it's got a special floor or something coating on it that gives it a 50-plus-year life, so that allows us to, quite significantly cheaper. You know, at that point, we were looking at about a three-quarter of a million-dollar project, and as you see on this one, the bids came in at 240 for this repair, which, and it should be a good repair. It's not just a patch along, it should give us a good solid 50 years on the structure. It's, again, with its lower loading and lower duty. So we're proposing to do that repair. One thing that makes this one a little different is because some of that, those soil conditions on the bottom are, we don't know exactly what we're going to get into, there is a 20% contingency on there. Typically, we only do 10, but you know, there's some potential for some additional work to be done there that we don't know about yet. But in general, we only got one bid, which this time of year isn't too terribly surprising. We have always planned this as a two-year project, so the intent was to start this fall when the water goes down, and then whatever balance needs to happen in 2025, do that in the spring with the paving. And so, yeah, when you bid projects this time of year, a lot of contractors are busy and you get less interest, but the one bid that we did get was good, and it's a good contractor. So K&amp;D was the same ones that built Miami Intersection, the roundabout. It was a pleasure. They did an excellent job, great quality, great to work with, so we're very confident recommending them. And then the pricing was good as well. That's about what we thought it would be in our estimates. We budgeted $200,000 this year, knowing that it'd be a two-year project, so that $200,000 will get us started. We budgeted, are proposing, 150 for next year, and that's, obviously, that's 350, so that's more than the contracted amount, but we don't know exactly how that split will occur, depending on how much they spend in '24 versus '25, so we budget for what we think the most might be for that year, but ultimately, the 240 is what would govern. The design was done in-house, surveying's in-house, there's no consultant part of this one, it's just straight construction contract. Sorry, that was a lot, all at once. Happy to answer any questions.
The only question I have, Scott, is are we prepared, if we, during the excavation and removal of the center pipe, if those head walls have deterioration that's not visible from a prior inspection, are we prepared to repair or replace those? And if so, do we have any kind of idea how, what the cost would be for that replacement?
Yes, so likely could probably fit within that 20, or yes, so we have plans for stable, making sure those stay stable and upright and are sure during construction. If we make the call that they need to be replaced, if any need to be replaced, it would be the downstream one, which would likely fit within the contingency. We can detail that out and then design that so it won't delay the project. We'd be able to adjust and keep going as needed. You know, depending on how, the severity of it, if you have to do both, you might be into change order territory, in which case we could come back for a change order, but we're confident that everything we expect to be within the noise is covered, and it shouldn't be too far out from that.
Scott, eventually, we want to have a trail, a recreation trail along the whole thing of Cedar Creek. Will this bridge impede any of that?
No, so it's pretty heavily used for pedestrian now. It's a 25-foot, or, I can't remember, 28, sorry. It's wide enough that, very comfortable for pedestrian use. You know, so it's currently used for that and can continue to be used for that. With such low service, you know, there's, I don't know, Jim has an exact number, maybe a couple of times a week that a vehicle goes across there. I'd say there's more pedestrians that go across than vehicles. So there's no driver, given that low volume, there's no real need to, like, make a separate pedestrian facility, in my opinion, so this will support whatever comes of that in the future.
So the trail, I assume, is going to go down the side of Cedar Creek? Eventually.
Yeah. I think you'd parallel, and then it'd just be another spur to tie in, because a lot of people walk, you know, just do the cemetery loop.
Hi, Tim.
Jim's coming in.
I agree with Scott. I think so the use of the trail, or of the bridge for operations is pretty minimal. You know, a few trucks or backhoes during a week, so its primary use is pedestrian. Probably gets used many times a day for pedestrian use, so at a 20-some-foot width, you know, definitely adequate for a pedestrian path across there. So just using it as kind of a dual-use, I would say, is best. And I don't think it impacts, I think maybe you're talking about a trail that would parallel Cedar Creek. I don't think that this would prevent that by any means, as a trail would be, could be added in the future to parallel the creek. I think this would only complement it, really.
Thank you, and I know it's important to get over to the Papa grave area.
Yeah, Potter's Field.
Thank you, Potter's Field. And, because I know there are people who go over there occasionally, just tour that.
Yeah, yeah, it is. You see vehicles over there on occasion, so it is used.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Council? Thank you, Scott. Next item, item 2B, Private Activity Bond Cap Allocation, Community Development Specialist, Christopher Ottinger. Morning.
As you have in your packet and everything, we are up again to do private activity bond allocations. As you know, we are allocated a certain amount of dollar bond allocation, not specific dollars, but
Ones that we are allowed to issue from the state. That is based on a per capita calculation, and as you see in your notes in the memo, we've seen a couple of increases over the past few years, and what we've done in the past, past six years really, is to assign this to the Colorado Housing and Finance Authority to use for first-time homebuyers, mortgages, down payment assistance, those type of programs. This year's allocation is $1,325,266, a 6% increase from prior year, just showing our increase in population and their calculation thereof. The staff is recommending that we do again, assigned to Colorado Housing and Finance Authority. They actually some have some more programs that they're creating for support of homebuyers, particular to, it's called First Generations and First Generation Plus. Provides down payment assistance and 30-year fixed-rate mortgages to certain borrowers. Those are particular to foster care system and those who have not previously owned a home in their, in generational lifetime. So their parents or their grandparents never even owned a home. This provides an extra boost for those folks to break that cycle and be able to get into those homes. And so, if you have any questions.
This is not a question, but just to like to emphasize the fact, and you've covered it in your memo, but I think it's important that our citizens know and understand that by allocating this to CHAF, it still stays within the jurisdiction of the city of Montrose, correct?
Absolutely, absolutely. We have that specifically in our allocation language to CHAF, that it must be used within our region.
Thank you. Questions?
Yeah. Does Habitat ever get involved in any of that, or are they eligible to participate in?
This is specific to CHAF. The only other time that another organization would be involved is if they had state housing tax credits, and then they would use the PAB allocation to supplement their financing. So something like Habitat, they have other programs and other funding sources that they go after for their programs, not this specific one.
Questions, comments, further? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item 2C, Nations, excuse me, Nations Addition Revised Annexation Agreement, Staff Planner Two, William Reese.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. The Nations Addition is a piece of land that was originally annexed into city limits in 2007. A map has been included in this morning's packet, but the property is currently two parcels located on the northwest corner of 6700 Road and Miami Road, and also south of Evans Street. The most recent annexation agreement is from 2018, and that is included in this morning's packet as well. To explain these agreements very basically, with any annexation, we do record these agreements at the same time as the annexation plat and the ordinances. The specific details of the agreements might vary from annexation to annexation, but generally, they all state that a developer shall provide sewer and water with any significant development, reserve at least 8% of the development as open space if the property is to be subdivided. We do look at the comprehensive plan to outline any public improvements that need to be provided. We have a future transportation map that shows planned arterials, and if something does go through the proposed annexation, we do require that dedication with any development. We also have maps for recreational and bike paths and public parks, and will require those in the agreements as necessary. These agreements are not typically put into the City Council packets and voted on during the annexation process because they are not usually signed by City Council. All the improvements do need to get reviewed and approved during the preliminary plat and final plat anyway. However, this original annexation agreement was signed by the mayor at the time, and that was carried through to the 2018 revisions, and so we're keeping this consistent and bringing these proposed 2024 revisions to City Council as well. Planning, engineering, and legal all work together on these red lines, so I think we'll all tag-team any questions, but the purpose of this revision is to match our modern development standards and practices and match what our current comprehensive plan suggests for the property. The red line version and the clean version are both included in the packet this morning, and you can see that many of the changes are just simple housekeeping changes to the dates, ownership, reception numbers, et cetera. As you can see under 4C, we've included some of the rights-of-way dedication requirements that will be needed with any future development. This would include dedication of future rights-of-way to extend 6675 Road, the full width of Evans Street, the widening of the 6700 Road Bridge, and enough to accommodate a future roundabout at 6700 Road and Miami Road, as well as the public utility easements alongside the rights-of-way. And then under 4D, we've included the requirements to actually develop these rights-of-way to our current standards. We've also included some language about a future recreational trail. This would take the form of an easement for the benefit of the public, but that would be owned and maintained by HOA. We've also removed the language regarding the COPS fee, or the City Operations and Police Services fee, which is an outdated reference to a former fee schedule, and that was updated a few years ago. And finally, some language regarding Cedar Creek and bank stabilization and silt runoff. As mentioned, the full extent of the red lines are included in the packet. If there are any questions, as I said, this was worked on by planning, legal, and engineering, so we can tag-team any questions that you might have.
The one thing I want to make sure is that the public understands that we had recently seen this property come forward for a rezoning, and this does not rezone anything, and that is not part of this packet and part of this proposal at all.
Correct. I'm glad you mentioned that, and that was going to be my comment, and also that this really is, really, I don't see anything of substance, as far as the changes in the amendment are, but really more clarification and bringing up to date with current regulations and standards, correct?
Correct.
I do like the changes in 4C, making sure we're clarifying.
Any further comments or questions, Council?
Yeah, I have a question concerning that police fee, that 900 and some dollars, the reasoning for taking that out of the new agreement?
So that was an outdated reference to a former fee schedule. That was updated a few years ago, I forget the exact date, but that is no longer part of the code, and so as the annexation agreement references it, or at least the current annexation agreement references it, but that is no longer a part of our code, and so it's an outdated reference. This would update the
Okay, so it's no longer part of our fee schedule or our requirements for development or that sort of stuff?
Correct.
Anything further? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item 2D, 2024 Landfill Contract Award Recommendation, Public Works Director Jim Shid and Trash and Recycle Superintendent Abel Velardi.
Good morning, Council.
I got all the way through.
Yeah, we have some trash talk for you this morning. So with this, with this one, we are recommending award of a contract with Bruin Waste. So we've, this is for our landfill services, which means where we deposit the trash after we collect it. So we use city trucks, run our routes, we pick up residents' trash from commercial and residential, and then we deliver it to a landfill. And in the case over the last, at least 10 years, we have delivered that to Waste Management at the landfill just north of town. And over the past few years, there's been a new competitor in that market, and that's Bruin Waste. They have bid on this service over the last two or three bids we've put out, and in this case, their tonnage rate was lower, which is partly because we've seen, like, significant increases in tipping fees through the market and also specifically from Waste Management, which kind of opened the door for competition in that, and that's what we're seeing now. We're able to see multiple competitors in this market, and Bruin Waste operates a transfer station, so it's a little different than Waste Management's operation. What they have is on North Townsend, there is a transfer station where we would deliver our waste, we'd collect it the same way we do now, we would deliver it to their transfer station, and then they would transfer it to a different landfill. They're actually hauling it over to a landfill that they own over by Natchitochi, I believe. And so in addition to the lower tipping fees, there's a couple dollars lower per ton that Bruin bid on, but there's also some operational advantages to using the Bruin Transfer Station, and I'll let Abel kind of explain a few of the operational benefits to using Bruin instead.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay, like Jim said, I think by us going with Bruin, there's a big savings. One of the savings is we got a lot of truck repairs, and by us going with Bruin, it's a lot closer than us going up to the landfill, a lot of flat tires and stuff like that. Fuel, we're going to save a lot on fuel by not having to go that far. Right now, and time, time is our biggest thing. Right now, we're taking about two hours per truck per day to go up to the landfill and back, which are just north of town, and I think that's going to save us a lot of money there. Also, by doing this, we're looking at maybe getting another person in our department, another truck, and by doing this, we have time to, we don't have to do it right away right now. Maybe we're going to do it possibly in the next year, year and a half, but by doing this, I think we got time. By the time we're saving, we don't have to do that right away.
Great. Can you tell us what the approximate annual tonnage is?
Yeah, it's usually just under 10,000 tons, so if you're looking at the difference, the savings would be in the range of $20,000 per year, just in tipping fees.
Right.
And then, as Abel mentioned, there's other savings when it comes to tires, fuel, things like that as well. Not as easy to put an exact number to that, but definitely the tipping fees, yeah, it's about 10,000 tons per year that we haul.
Is this going to eliminate some of the weather issues that we've had in the past also?
It could. I think they'll be similar, so it'll definitely help on rain days and snow days because there's not, you know, the muddy road access, but on wind days, we're still going to have the same concern. So when it's windy, the landfill that we've been using will close down, and so would the transfer station. So there'll be similar issues on windy days, but definitely better on the moisture days. And so I guess to kind of close us off, because of the tipping fees, they are in the range of what we expected for this year, we knew there was going to be some kind of increase. I think our tonnage rate right now is just over $60 a ton, and we, building this year's budget and next year's, we anticipate an increase based on CPI inflation each year. And so with this, we don't anticipate that we would exceed our budget for the disposal fees that's in our budget this year or next year. I guess what I'm saying is it's right in line with what we anticipated, and we don't feel like this would impact our budget significantly, so.
It sounds like, based on the traveling, the distance traveled, plus wear, tear on our equipment and all, I know you can't put a specific number on it, but that should be a fairly significant number, right?
It is, yeah. It is hard to say exactly, but you're right. You know, tires and fuel are one thing, and there'll obviously be some fuel usage and go into the transfer station that we're talking about as well, but not nearly as much. It's not nearly as far away. We're not anticipating having to wait at the scale for any amount of time, so those things are definitely an advantage. And then, of course, tipping fees being slightly lower as well helps.
Right.
And then the time factor, yeah, that's one that's even harder to put a dollar amount to, but definitely, as Abel was saying, helps kind of our future projections and how we keep up with our, you know, growing routes. In the future, in the next few years, we likely wouldn't need to add, you know, trucks and drivers to our routes to keep up, mainly because we'd be saving quite a bit of time by using this site rather than the landfill.
Where at is it located on North Townsend? I'm sitting there trying to figure out where it's at. I don't recall seeing anything or
It's the old Alpine Building, lumber, right across from the airport.
No.
No, not that far, almost right across from the airport.
Oh, that's behind by the, used to be the stud manufacturing place.
Yeah, and they've been operating this transfer station for their own operations for quite some time, so even our added waste there won't be a significant change to their operation. They've been operating this themselves for quite a few years already.
So it's not going to create a slightly entrance to the city of Montrose by having that?
It shouldn't change it from the way it has been operated over these last several years anyway, so.
How about safety for the drivers?
Well, we won't have to go up that long hill at the landfill. That's, that'll be safer, right? This is all, you know, at grade, so there's no big hills or anything, and definitely a little bit better operation for the drivers.
When we had this discussion several years ago, when we first went with Waste Management, Bruin also bid at that time, and some comments that we got from constituents was their carbon footprint that we affect by having these trucks take this stuff all the way to New Glen Adderita. So I think that's something we need to have in the back of your brains, that we're going to have some of those constituents come forward and to have some of those constituents come forward and say, wait a minute, we don't want you driving that stuff all the way over there.
But we still had to drive it to the landfill.
Right, but that's not the carbon footprint that it takes to drive it to Nucla.
I guess my concern was the safety of the trucks coming from this side of town, going that way, and then crossing over on the highway to get to the other side of the street to put it in there. That's, I guess, what I was trying to get at.
The crossing right on North Townsend you're talking about. I feel like that's a fairly safe intersection, good visibility there, that, you know, we'll have six trucks likely twice a day going in there, and that's not an excessive amount. I think that area is, if we had to do it anywhere, that's a good place for it.
Okay, that was another question, is would that additional traffic facilitate some kind of additional requirements for C dot?
It's not large enough to go above their threshold. I'm sorry.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, that concludes our discussion items, and we'll move on to staff reports. The first one will be scheduling of City Council Budget Retreat. Finance Director Shaney Wittenberg.
Good morning, City Council. So we generally, for the past several years, we've developed the budget, we hear from you, then we propose the budget to you during a one-day, usually about a six-hour retreat, we call it, or a strategic session, which then gives you more of the meat and potatoes that's in the budget. We still then have time to make tweaks if necessary. So this year, on the calendar, we have September 19th. It's a Thursday from nine to four, tentatively scheduled. So I just wanted to confirm with you all, or take feedback on a different date if necessary.
That works perfectly for me.
Great.
Where at is it located?
We have not determined that yet. So it'll probably be at the pavilion, but it might also just be in the Centennial Room.
Oh, okay. I have my classes at five o'clock, so...
Okay, so downtown would be better?
Yeah. For yours, it's about either way. Yeah, so I was just curious.
That's great. Okay.
Nineteenth is fine for me.
All right. Mr. Glassbell? You good with that? All right.
I don't know how to work the calendar on my phone, so I appreciate...
Yep, I will send you, I'll send you a calendar invite. Yep, and we'll put it on the City Council calendar as well.
It's already on there, it's tentative.
Nice. Okay, well, we'll confirm it now. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on the retreat? Then we will move on to Staff Report 3B, Second Quarter and Midyear Crime Statistics. Chief Blaine Hall.
Thanks, City Council. I'll just go over these quickly and then answer any questions that you all may have. I'm focusing on the second quarter stats. I think there's some good news to be had. We're definitely down in our sexual assaults and our domestic violence, which is good, although one thing that is always something to focus on when you're down on sexual assaults is, are you really down, or is it a matter of people aren't reporting them, which is something we should always be focusing on? And I think that's something that we'll probably remind our public and maybe do a couple Facebook posts and things like that, just to kind of keep it in front of our public for reporting those very serious crimes. When it comes to felony and misdemeanor arrests or crimes are holding pretty steady, we have absolutely increased the number of arrests we've had for felonies, both in adult, but especially in the juvenile category. I think that's a good thing and a bad thing, of course. Something that is concerning is that in the last three months, we've had an 80% increase or nine firearm-involved crimes. That's about three every month, which is a concern, but our use of force is down just a bit. Our mental health holds contacts, our coresponder referrals are holding pretty steady as well. Then I'll take any questions you all might have on that, and then I wanted to give you an update on hiring for code enforcement, because that always seems to be at the top of the list. All right, we have made a final offer to a person who will be filling our code enforcement position here at least for the next four to five months. Her name is Jaden Platt. Jaden eventually wants to be a police officer and wants to attend our summer police academy, but for now, she'll be serving in the code enforcement position. As you can see, definitely weeds is a primary issue within the city, especially after all the rains, and so we have been focusing on that with one of our officers that's on light duty and also a cadet that's in training right now before he goes to the academy. So we've issued several weed notice violations, and I'm starting to see a little bit of improvement in some of our intersections, but there's, of course, much more work to be done in that area. So very hopeful with our new person coming on board and getting her up to speed.
Chief, if someone has a weed complaint, the best way to do that is through the Better Montrose app?
You can do that. You can also give us a call. So those are both fine to use. Again, we'll have to get Jaden up to speed on using that app. You can always give us a call, too. You know, actually, Mayor Protem, there is something I'd like to add to that, though. We have an online reporting tool that is not a good way to report weeds to us, because that simply drops into our records process. That's for, you know, non-serious crimes to report those. But you need to give us a call or use Better Montrose if you plan on reporting code enforcement issues.
Yeah, one of the questions I had, since Murphy's sitting right here also, how long were we extended 6700 on through? All those new lots that we put in out there, the weeds are getting pretty high on both sides of the road. Is that something...
They're working on them right now.
They mowed them.
He blew a blade. Yeah, they got half of it done in a rock at Mower, and they're coming back, though.
The school part of that, my lawnmower blew a starter, and now it's one of those very complicated to replace the starter. Starter's only $20, but it takes a day to pull the motor and the drive in order to replace the starter. And...
Right, so...
Because of the work that was done on the 6700 road on the school side, there's a lot of debris still left in there from that, and getting my tractor in there with the big blade is just a little difficult. I've been hitting wood and some metal posts that they took from that.
If there's anything from us, let us know.
They should have picked up all our stuff, but there is stuff.
Well, it was the barricade that originally was there at the corner of 6700, slinging like the...
Yeah.
I drove over, just bent it, but I didn't break it.
Okay, I know. So...
Any other questions, comments, Chief Hall? Thank you, Chief. Always appreciate your report. Now we will move into item number four, General City Council Discussion. At the last work session, Councilman Glassbell requested a discussion of a potential ballot question on the lodging tax, and City Manager Mr. Bell agreed to bring forward some information for us to discuss this morning. So Bill, I'll turn it over to you.
I shared, right after the last meeting, I shared the documentation from the last time we researched the issue, which was just here, within the last couple of years. The issue is that we currently have an under 1% for our lodging tax here in our community, very low when you look at lodging taxes around the state and around the country. Just as a reminder to everyone, the lodging tax is what funds, when we talk about the OBT, the Office of Business and Tourism, a lot of the marketing tourism-related things, the familiarization tours we give buses when they come in to go to the Black Canyon, and we partner with the Black Canyon National Park, anything and everything related to tourism. So people coming in from out of town to stay in hotels, to eat at the restaurants, buy gas at the gas stations, stock up, and then go back home is what we use those funds for. When we talk about OBT, we have the two different funds. We have the Tourism Promotion Fund, and we also have the Retail Sales Enhancement. So this is on the tourism side. We looked at other communities, and we were asked to bring it up for discussion again. The last time we talked about it, we decided it wasn't the right time to bring forward any new tax initiatives. It's really important for people in the community to understand that locals don't pay this unless you're a local that happens to stay in a hotel for some reason, or you have family in town visiting, you would pay that. But otherwise, it is all tourists passing through, staying in the hotels. So it's a really important thing to keep in mind. It's also important to know, because when we did the study to show who has the lodging taxes, who also has property taxes, and the City of Montrose does not have a property tax that comes into the city as a revenue source. We're primarily sales tax, lodging and restaurant tax-driven, and so this has nothing to do with property taxes, doesn't raise property taxes, and isn't a property tax of any kind. But it's important to know that a lot of the other communities that have different budgets for tourism and things also are funding some of those things via an extra property tax that we don't have access to. All that being said, since the last discussion, when we were asked to put this on for a talk today, it was brought to my attention, I totally spaced it out at the last one where I would have brought it up, but we also have the school looking at bringing forward a tax measure to replace the high school here in our community. We also have some of the legislation statewide that would affect our property tax entities, limiting residential property tax and those types of things. We talked about it a little bit in the past with legal advice, and then at our Colorado Municipal League Conference, we heard a lot about it. We're not affected by those measures necessarily, because we don't collect property tax, but all of our partnering entities in the community are. And so that's something to keep in mind as we entertain anything for the November ballot, how might that affect other entities in our community? And so I think that's something we want to talk about today, and that'll be a big part of whether we decide as a group to move forward with anything. We wouldn't want to necessarily negatively impact our neighboring taxing entities right here in our own community. So that's everything I know. I can answer any questions or just open it up for discussion.
I think my point would be, we need to get out there. If we're going to do it, we would have to get out there and make certain that we explain that it isn't coming off of local taxes. And we've been discussing this for so many years, I think that we really need to, my personal feelings, we finally need to go ahead and move forward with it. But I think the promotional informational piece of that is very important.
I guess, from my perspective, the people that I've talked to, because I thought about entertaining a tax like that, was they want, if it does come on as a ballot question, to be, to state specifically what the funds could be used for, not just 30 things and then say, oh, yeah, it could be used for that, but specifically for certain things that the community really needs, so.
Yeah, and I think that's an important piece. We could easily do that in the wording and dedicate a certain percentage to street maintenance in our community, a certain percentage to historic building renovations or preservation. There's a lot of things we could specifically earmark right in there in the language, so people would know where the money was going.
In our packet, Mr. Bell had included, usages included include administration of the tax, wastewater treatment, housing, management of the tourism, airport support, public safety, transportation. There's this wide variety of things that it's allowable uses, and I think that one of the things that it's important for our public to know is that when tourists come into the valley, they impact all of these things when they come here to visit. And I think that that having ability, right now with less than 1% of a property tax, it makes it really difficult for us to allocate significant money to alleviate the impact of the tourism.
And I just want to clarify, lodging tax?
The lodging tax.
Yeah, you said less than 1% property taxes.
Oh, I'm sorry, lodging tax, lodging tax. Sorry. We were talking about property tax, and you got me off the line there. Yeah, less than 1% lodging tax. Yeah, so my only concern is that, as we've stated, a number of us sat on the Citizens' Design Advisory Group for the high school, and we got to see kind of in-depth what that condition of our current high school is, and the maintenance and physical challenges that they're facing at that really patchworked older building. And I'm not really going to advocate one way or the other for it, but I don't want us to negatively impact their drive, and I don't want people conflating our lodging tax being involved with that at all. So I'm really kind of hesitant to put it up there this year, because I don't want to negatively impact them as well.
I don't know how many times we've discussed this issue, though, and every time, there has been something else that's going to be on the ballot that we might impact, whether it be the people running for office or somebody else who's going for a tax increase. I don't think we can keep pushing this down the road, because I don't think there's ever going to be a perfect time for this.
I think that's probably true.
I would agree. Actually, I'd probably agree with everything everybody has said so far. I am, and I am very supportive of increasing the lodging tax for the reasons that have previously been stated, but I do question the timing, and I know it's been pushed, kicked. The can has been kicked down the road multiple times in the past, and maybe what we should do now is be definitive as to when we would like it on the ballot, but not necessarily in November, for, again, the reasons stated. But we want it to be successful. That's obviously the reason we're doing it. And I do feel with, it's the November ballot, it's going to be an incredibly long ballot. There are going to be multiple tax issues included in the ballot. And while we can spend all the time marketing this between now and November, should we choose to do it, I think the reality is, and when we market it, make it very clear that this is a tax that is 99% paid by our visitors to our community, and it's not a burden on our local citizens, but it has the word "tax" in it. And when people are considering a tax, that reverberates across the board without regard to whether it's a sales tax to be collected by the city, a lodging tax, a property tax, or any other kind of tax. Every time you increase the use of the word "tax" on the ballot, I think you put at risk what you are trying to accomplish. And because I am so supportive of it, I would favor not doing anything this November, but I would be agreeable to us talking now about when is the appropriate time to look towards putting it on the ballot and use that as a target date in the future. I kind of would disagree with you, because I'm like Judy, if we keep pushing this wagon down the road, nothing will ever happen. And if we keep saying, oh, yeah, well, we'll put it off till the first of the year, or till next November, or whatever, as long as we let the people of this community know that this is not a tax on them, this is actually to help us provide the services, repair our roads, that some of the damages that occur from people visiting our community. And I just think that probably November would be a good time. I just hate to see keep next year, and next year, and next year, and nothing ever happen.
I just hate to see keep next year, and next year, and next year, and nothing ever happen.
Yeah, I'm for going ahead with it. I think that, I've sat on council meetings for 20 years, and I don't know how many of that 20 years we've been pushing and talking and discussing this thing. I think it's time to go ahead and do it. If it fails, then we try it again the next time.
You know, I really agree with that. I'm not a kick-the-can-down-the-road kind of person. I don't like doing that. I think that we were elected to face issues even if they're tough, and we're elected to face some of these questions even if they're tough. And I think perhaps now is as good a time as any, because otherwise, I think Judy Ann is right, we're going to keep finding reasons why we can't put it on that particular one. So after thinking about it, I think, like you said, make sure we really adequately explain and try. I think from either real question is, what do we want to set it at? Because a lot of our neighboring communities, and the information that Mr. Bell provided us, range from, anything from 6% to 16%. And I think for our community, finding out a rate that is reasonable and realistic is more important than when we put it on the ballot.
Well, obviously, there's a majority that feel that we should do it in November, and I will support that. I don't think it's the right time, and I'm, as I said, much more interested in seeing it pass than fail, obviously. But if that is the consensus, I'll go along with the consensus. But I'm, well, I think if we're going to move forward, we need to move forward as a unit council. And so if four of the council members are supportive of it, I will, I'll support that. What's it going to cost us to do this?
Can I ask Bill a question? Is it possible that if, by looking at some of the revenues that were generated last summer, or the beginning of this year and part of last year, as to what, say, 2% or 3%, or whatever percentage we feel would be adequate to sit there and say, okay, these will generate X amount of dollars for the city in revenues, rather than, I don't know, just, is it possible to do something like that?
I think we're so close to having a 1% that you can just, it's easy math. So we can easily pull up something that shows if we went to 3%, that's going to triple our revenue if we're going to 4%, 5%. So it makes for easy math for us, so yes, we can definitely do that. It's just a guesstimate based on, we can do three-years' average or something like that. We also have the new Marriott that came online, so that's additional hotel revenue we didn't have in our past history. Right?
Right.
Right. And so we, that one's URA, but we also have the Rathbone Downtown, and we know, we might have other ones in the future come online. So just know that whatever number we give, it's not guaranteed to come in. We're not budget forecasting that. It would be impossible to do that. But also, it's important to look at the facts from the study, because it shows the average rate was 6.7%, and the median rate was 6%. And so just as a reminder to everyone, median means the very middle one out of all of them was 6%, and the average 6.7%, and we're at .9%. And so it might, if we're now talking about what the proposed rate might be, I think it needs to be high enough that we don't have to come back anytime in the next couple of decades. And so it's worth our while, but not so high that it just seems out of the ordinary and unusual. And so I think just for discussion purposes, I would throw out something between 4% and 6% should be our target range.
That's kind of like where my mind thought was.
We're coming up on the last day to notify the clerk and recorder of our intent to have a ballot issue, correct?
Yes, I did some calculations this morning, and we would have to notify the county clerk by Thursday, July 25th. I'm not sure if we'd have to adopt a resolution before then, just send out the notification.
I think just send out the notification. I'd have to look at it a little bit further.
I would agree with that.
And then we would have to have our ballot language set by Friday, September 6th, but since Friday is a non-workday for, I think, both the county clerk and the city, Thursday, September.
What do you estimate the election will cost the city?
So that's kind of interesting. They take the number of political subdivisions with questions, and they divide the cost. I would estimate maybe $15,000 would be our share. There will have to be a Tabor notice, and I'm not entirely sure if they would produce the Tabor notice and build it into our cost, or if we would do that. But we did have printing and postage built into the budget for the city clerk's office for this year's election that we didn't lose. So we do have any in the clerk's office budget for that.
And that's another thing to, just one further small point on my earlier point, is that it is a Tabor election, so clearly it will state in the question, should taxes be increased by whatever that number is? So, right away, you start off, regardless of what you tell our citizens, you're asking the question, should taxes be increased? And we just need to keep that in mind.
I think Shani can talk a little bit up to Ed's question.
Yeah, I was just bringing up, so pre-COVID, so in 2019, we collected about $122,000 in hotel excise tax. And it has, it kind of remained the same there for a couple of years, 132, I think, was 2021's collection. And last year, we collected 200,000, just over 200,000. So for hotel excise tax. So that kind of gives you an idea. Looks like it's recently, we've gotten a lot of tourists, and it's kind of about $30,000 a year. And that's at .9%.
I think I would support what staff you guys come up with feel like is a fair way to go without raising it up too much, and worry about later doing it again. So I think if we can find that area that you were talking with, I'd certainly support that.
I like the idea of 6%. That's just a good median number, supported by all of our surrounding municipalities with similar size.
I would agree with that.
I also really liked some wording you used a little while ago about tourism impact. If we can kind of use that as the key word, we're not locally impact, it's the impact that tourism has on our streets, and our water system, and those type of specifics. As I know the people I've talked to in the last two weeks are really thinking that it's time for the tourists to pay more. So if we can keep that tourism word in there, it makes a difference.
If it's all right, well, I think we, do we need to do a formal resolution for the letter? We don't, right? Just this general consensus? Okay. We don't need to put the terms and everything into that letter, so we have until September to come up with all that. So in this timeframe, let us put together a narrative draft. That would include proposed options for rates, but also talk about the mitigation of tourism impacts to our community, and outline what those might be, and how, and then that'll give you some choices on how to earmark it if you want to do it for specific things, and call that out in the language. We can come up with some narrative for you to look at. And maybe the first meeting of August, we could have that discussion, if that sounds good to everyone.
Sure. Is that okay with everyone?
There was an article in a newspaper from Utah concerning Moab, and what was happening was their population, their normal population is under 2,000 or something like that. And then during the summertime, it balloons up to 500,000. It was like extremely, and the actual damages that people were wearing stuff out was fairly substantial. So they got to the point where they were considering, like, adding a tax to the residents to help pay for that stuff instead of adding it to the visitors. So I don't know if that article's available anyplace, but it was really interesting to see, and I believe it was about a year ago that I read it.
In short, let growth pay for its way. Okay, any further discussion on that issue? So we'll come back and revisit it.
Looks like August 5th work session. Good, bring it back.
Very good. Any other staff reports? Roundabout isn't nice.
It's open.
Yep.
It looks good.
Please tell us who designed the art.
Landscapers are hard to come by these days. We had, the design was done by John Malloy, who's kind of started his own landscaping company. The main, one of the main landscapers we usually go to in town. Julie Wolverton has kind of retired out. But John Malloy, he used to work for the city, but he designed the other two, so we wanted kind of consistency on the Hillcrest corridor. The theme is kind of historic Montrose, and so it, and the coming together of Montrose. So I had a newspaper reach out to us to kind of explain that. So there's three quadrants of it. Each has rock materials from the different, Uncompagre Plateau, the North Fork, from different areas. So the rock is kind of meant to show that we are the crossroads of three, you know, major, you know, kind of natural features, natural landmark type stuff. The railroad tied it together, so, you know, he wanted to use railroad ties in his landscaping, so with that, he put a railroad on top of the weather vane, or put a train on top of the weather vane. So it's, took me a while to realize that it actually turns with the wind, so it's not a fixed thing. So it's a true weather vane. In the bottom of that centerpiece is a piece off of an old steam engine. It's a steam-regulating valve. And, yeah, some were asking if it was an oilfield thing, but it's, so it kind of looked like a derrick, but their intent was a weather vane going for kind of old historic Montrose. So, yeah.
You got to go around it two or three times, though, before you feel you can see it all.
Yeah, yeah. It's nice how it's closed when it was, or that it's open when it was closed, you know, people were taking the invitation to climb on it and do teenager things, but that's since gotten better, so.
I also like the openness out around the four corners.
Yeah.
It just makes it feel better. I don't know.
Yeah.
It's beautiful.
It worked out, yeah, we ended up with, because we own the park on the one corner, with a lot of the utility locates, we had to go into that area anyway. We had to, some of the tree conflicts, we planted trees, and some to replace what had to be taken out. And a lot of those were pretty, they were really nice majestic trees, but they were also very unhealthy. There were some that were taken out by the HOA, kind of right as we started as well. So, yeah, we've actually taken over that landscaping on the south leg, just to make it all look real nice on those approaches and control. Yeah, keep it, keep it open, keep it from getting overgrown, so. Glad you guys like it. It's great. Thank you.
Anything further from staff?
And you're going to ask, our question's about segmenting on 5th. They will be paving, or scheduled to pave the next reach up to Park on 5th this week. So that should be getting better. Yep, so they did the first block, they'll get the next, I think, two to get up to Park. So they're working their way down the, still working through the water line at the far end, so that'll be a little slower down there, but. I think Ryan. Closure's off and on, you know, as they work through. So the latest closure was getting the storm line across and getting some of those inlets set. There'll be kind of intermittent closures. We're trying to not have them just wholesale close it and leave it closed for three weeks. So if they're doing them, they're doing them one or two days at a time, and we're not letting them just leave it closed in between, so. So you'll probably see more of that, as the mill and overlay would be the next piece of that, so.
Very good. Council, any discussion?
So I went to the CML Executive Board Retreat this last weekend, and it was really great, having an opportunity to speak to some of the mayors, mayor pro temps, city managers, and city attorneys of the different municipalities represented on that board. The one thing that I came away from is, they are all jealous of Montrose, because we are such a high-functioning city administration and council, that I've had a lot of, a lot of them were commenting about how, boy, that sure must be nice to work with a council and with staff that are so professional and so well-trained. And the issues that they are facing in their cities are a lot of the same issues we face here, only we all seem to be further along on solving those issues than a lot of our other communities and around Colorado. And it made me very proud to be from Montrose. And it was a very productive meeting, and I think the board is going to be very, very proactive on a lot of issues, and as well as advocating for local control, and making sure that local government has the ability to set our own destiny. And it was a really great trip.
Thank you. Except for I.
Speaking of tourism, I know I forwarded you all the news about Breeze Airline now flying into Montrose five days a week, starting in December. That's a really positive thing, because to do this, Breeze chose to pull out of Grand Junction. They will no longer fly Grand Junction, they'll only fly Montrose. And if it works as well from December on, as we think it's going to, then they'll probably consider doing it year-round. And that's a whole new market, to have Southern California. You know, like the releases say, it's 22 minutes from Disneyland, it's an hour from San Diego.
And that's the best airport in that part of Southern California to fly in and out of.
I've actually been to that airport, surprisingly, John Wayne Airport.
John Wayne Airport.
And then secondly, I also sent all of you the picture of the quilt that was chosen last week for the mayor award. Thank you to David for letting me go do that. And we talked a little bit about maybe displaying it at City Hall, and so just this morning, the quilter texted me and said, would we like to borrow it for three or four months to put on display in City Hall? Is that possible? Is there any place in City Hall we could display it? You know, it's...
It's a pretty neat thing.
Let's say it's four by seven.
Well, we used to get quilts from the Quilters Guild, and we would display them behind the CSTs, but we really couldn't find a good place in the new City Hall that they would be protected. So that's really why we quit doing that. So I don't know if we've come up with anything since then, but.
That's a thought. I hadn't thought about the protection, because I know this is a very, very valuable quilt. We wouldn't want it touched or whatever.
With construction, going on the construction of Bree and Dust.
Speaking of construction, can we have an update? It looks like we're tearing it down instead of putting it up.
Yeah, we got to tear it down to make it, to make it pretty again, right? Well, I guess to start on the quilt thing, I also can't think of a great spot for it that would be secured and out of, you know, construction zone. And also depends on how big the quilt is. I think some of the issue we had with some of the ones we had previously was their size. There were some that were really big, and, you know, to find a wall space that's, you know, blank and flat, 10 feet, is really just, we don't really have any of those. So I agree, I don't know that I know of a great spot for it.
How about, I mean, throwing this out, how about inside the window in the buckhorn So when you're in the lobby, you'd be looking out the window, but the quilt would be on the inside.
Against the glass.
Against the glass, so that only people that could touch it would be people who were in the buckhorn room. That's just a suggestion.
Yeah, it's a thought, maybe we don't want to do it all.
I can give a quick update on construction, if you'd like. So, yeah, we are making progress, starting to go back together now. So the demo, for the most part, has been, has been completed. I do have some updated renderings. I don't have, didn't have them quite ready for this meeting, but hopefully by our next work session, I'll be able to share some updated renderings on what the...
Tomorrow's meeting?
No, I won't have it by tomorrow, sorry. But soon, and if not, I may be able to send it out by email, just so you all have it. But we are able to reuse the facade on the west wall, on the Cascade Avenue side of But we were able to reuse the facade on the west wall on the Cascade Avenue side of the building. So something we talked about early on, we didn't know what was under that side. We knew there was kind of a historic brick wall there, but didn't know its condition. And obviously, it is still there, it's in decent condition. It is, it was built in 1947 and is the original construction of that entire structure. So we are able to reuse it. We've adjusted our conceptual level design to incorporate that, to where there's obviously new facade being put around it, but kind of in a way highlighting that west wall as a, as a different facade. And so anyway, I do have renderings, we're working on completing these renderings now that I'll be able to share, but the intent is to reutilize that western wall that's shown now. So, but yeah, we're starting to go back together. So a lot of the underground foundation work is being done right now, and we'll start, start going back up here pretty soon, start to see some framing probably this week, so.
What's the determination, if any, on the utility lines in the alley?
It could be a potential project for next year. We've looked into it. It is quite complicated to be able to do that. It actually extends far beyond just behind City Hall, which is the area that we needed to do. It would extend probably as much as two blocks worth of, of undergrounding, mostly because of the three-phase electric that runs up high and where it serves. We really have to go from quite a substantial distance to be able to do it. So at this time, we're estimating costs and potentially including as a capital project that could be for next year. We're finding that the costs will be substantial, though, not only for the undergrounding itself, but all of the services that are off of that area, not only for City Hall, but all of the neighboring businesses and buildings, for electric and all of the other utilities. There's five different utilities on those poles, so it's complicated and expensive, and we're working on putting a budgetary number to it for potential capital project. But likely would happen separately as potentially next year.
So that will not interfere or delay the construction on the south side?
It will only delay the second story that's right immediately adjacent to those lines. So we'll still be able to do all the stucco work and windows on the lower portion, the first story section of City Hall and the underneath side, where we'll add lights and stuff under there. So that all will still be done. What won't be able to be done is the second story face that's close to those power lines. And then that would either have to wait on undergrounding utilities in the future or approaching that differently as a separate project.
Anything else from staff? Well, if not, we'll stand adjourned.